Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly called meeting for Tuesday, June the 3rd. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Kidder.
Here.
Councilwoman Butler.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young.
Here.
And Mayor Crocker.
Here. If you would, please rise and join me for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Again, welcome, everyone. Glad to see a full house tonight. We will jump straight into our items, and we'll start with item B1, announcements and reminders. Mr. Garza, do you have anything for us this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have a few updates for you on behalf of Public Works. We want to remind the public that we entered stage three drought restrictions last week due to low rainfall north of Victoria. Residents must continue to limit certain types of nonessential water usage to the hours of 6:00 to 10:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. to midnight, including watering lawns with sprinklers on designated watering days, Sundays and Thursdays for street addresses ending in even numbers, and Saturdays and Wednesdays for addresses ending in odd numbers, among other restrictions. For more information about water restrictions, please visit victoriatx.gov/newsroom. In addition, the public can also receive additional information around the drought restrictions by tuning into the latest episode of the city's Town Talk podcast, which is available on YouTube and Spotify. In this episode, Public Works Director Ken Gill discusses the complex and often overlooked process of getting water from the river to residents' faucets. Plus, learn more about the city's drought restrictions and what the city is doing to ensure an adequate water supply for years to come. So, water, you waiting for? Give it a listen.
See what you did there.
Ah, yeah, I did nothing. I just actually read it right, so thank you. On behalf of the Police Department, we would like to remind the public that they are hosting their fourth annual Casting with Cops, a free youth fishing event from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 7th at Sun Valley Ranch. During the event, children ages 2 to 15 will have the opportunity to meet their local first responders. Officers will help children with baiting hooks, reeling in fish, taking fish off hooks, et cetera. The event will have four one-hour time slots with a maximum of 50 participants per hour, accompanied by their guardians. Participants must register in advance by contacting the Community Engagement Unit at 361-485-3808 or emailing policeceu@victoriatx.gov. Those are the announcements for the evening.
All right, great, thank you. We'll jump into item B2, public and employee recognitions, and we'll begin with our award from Keep Victoria Beautiful this month. Ms. Uker, welcome.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here to award our beautification award for June. I did want to, I just realized that I also didn't give a big shout out to our last cleanup. We had our trash off cleanup in May where we had 176 volunteers clean up 18 locations all around Victoria. And our next one will be September 20th will be our next big cleanup, so we're starting to get the word out on that. So, given that, I'm going to bring up Meredith Byrd, so she can announce our winner for June.
Welcome, Ms. Byrd.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, tonight, we are honoring Fergmar Enterprises as our June Beautification Award winner. They're located at 4800 North Navarro, and they've been in this location. They moved in in 2022, so February marked three years. They also, they had expanded from their former home off of Del Mar on East Rio Grande. And so, from what I understand, they completely gutted this building and remodeled it, and they've been dominated two times, if I'm not mistaken, but they have a big property. Linda, at their front desk, tells me that whenever she comes into work, if she sees trash flying across the parking lot, she chases it down. And, as we know, you know, there's just, there's always a southeast wind blowing 15 miles an hour here, and there is so much just traffic along Navarro that it really does take quite an effort to keep these big properties clean, and then not even to mention the beautiful landscaping and just the grounds and the building in general. And so, tonight, I'm proud to present this award to Fergmar.
Thank you, and you've got the floor.
Thank you for this award. I just want to say, she's mentioned effort and just the team behind me from the design of the building to the Finance Department getting funding for such a project like this, to the construction team using local contractors, to even to our owner, to having the vision of a project such as that scale. So, I just want to thank them for making that project come to fruition, so thank you.
Thank you for being here, and congratulations. Mr. Garza, do you have any further public and employee recognitions?
I do, I have one more, Mayor. I'd like to ask April, Sandra, Mahdi, and Jackie to please come to the front here, if you don't mind, because there is a nice award here that I want everybody to see them hold. But our City Secretary's Office received the Texas Municipal Clerks Association's Achievement of Excellence Award, designed to recognize excellence in the effective and efficient management of resources in a municipal clerk's office. When awarded, the Texas Municipal Clerk's Office's Achievement of Excellence Award covers a period of two years. The City of Victoria's office is one of only 45 offices statewide that have received the award for the 2025-2026 award cycle, and this is the third consecutive time the office has received the award. And this, of course, is a testament to April and her team's continuous effort to just offer amazing customer service and top-of-the-line services in general. And so, April, Sandra, Mahdi, Jackie, congratulations. Thank y'all for everything that you do. And Mayor, if we can steal you for a quick picture, that'd be great.
Sure.
They worked so hard that they stayed in their office till 5:00 p.m., so we couldn't, we couldn't take the picture before the meeting. Photoshop me. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. So, we will jump in then to item B3, which is items from council. I know we have one item from council actually on the agenda, which is 3A. And Ms. Butler, this was your item.
There's been a lot of progress with Animal Services in the last few years since Mark Sloot came on as director. One of the most recent initiatives has really gained momentum within the community, reuniting lost pets. As, as most of us here in Victoria know, we see a lot of animals either stray or lost, and without using social media, we're not typically able to find where those animals go to if they're not microchipped. And Mr. Sloot has worked with Petco for a Love Lost program that we've seen the benefits from just a few days ago, where a miniature dash hound that was not microchipped, to the best of my knowledge, was reunited. A 16-year-old little miniature dash hound was reunited because of this program. And so, I really wanted Mr. Sloot to come and discuss the program and bring awareness to Victoria and the citizens within, not just the City of Victoria, but the county as well.
So, I brought props and a handout, so each of you have a handout. It's a, it's a, thank you, sir. The handout just gives you a brief overview of the, of the thing. Thank you.
Gracias.
So, it's super simple, because we're using a QR code, and this is a cooperative effort between Best Friends Humane Society and, or Animal Society and Petco Love. And when you click on, if you click on that QR code, it brings you right to the ability to list a dog you lost with a photo or post a dog that you found. So, what happened the other day, when those stars aligned just right, the Chair of our Animal Advisory Committee, Mike Atkinson, had put one of our signs in his yard. A young lady lost her 16-year-old Chihuahua. She saw that sign, she posted it on, on the Love Lost site. Caleb Shaw, lives next door to Mr. Atkinson, finds the dog, he's also a dachshund lover. He goes to the same sign, clicks on that QR code, and it shows him a bubble with that dog saying she lives a block down the road. So, and I just happened to be going over there to bring him something, and I got to see the whole reunion, so it came full circle. But the, the thing I want to impress, and this is the site right here, it's, we have our own dashboard, so it actually tracks how many people use our sign and our QR code. I had come up with this, wanting to do this within the city last November, I think we talked, and we just weren't able to bring it up. So, Petco and Best Friends came up with it as a nationwide thing. The first 35, the first part was the 35 people or 35 entities were involved. We were picked as one of only 13 to move on to the next phase, which is where we give out the scanner kits and stuff. So, we've got four scanner kits that will go out to people that live in the high-intake areas, and these are going to be people we pick that are willing to have people knock on the door, call them, and want to have a dog scanned, you know, people that are kind of proactive in their, in their neighborhoods. And again, it's an effort to try to keep dogs out of the shelter. Just a little history from 2018 to 2022, before I came, Victoria County Animal Services impounded 7,610 dogs. Of those, 3,674 were killed, mostly for no reason other than space. So, I'm trying to keep the animal numbers down. It's less about the percentage, and it's more about the reason why they're euthanized. You know, we don't have a problem euthanizing dogs that are aggressive or dangerous to the community, or, you know, kill livestock, things like that, but we're really trying hard not to kill dogs that are just people's pets out roaming loose. Victoria is known for having loose dogs. All of you that are from here know this. But this is also an effort to try to bring the public awareness that it's not okay to go out, you know, when you're having your morning coffee and just let your dog run out the front door. We have to keep them home, keep them safe. There's, you know, people need to feel safe walking down the street or the sidewalk, and also, it keeps your pet safe. You know, we don't want them getting hit by cars. We pick up a lot of DOA animals, and it's that simple, that we just need to keep them home. So, hopefully, involving the community, their peers, will help with some of that, and people will start engaging neighbors and talking to people. This program, the Petco Love, scans both Ring neighborhoods. If you, any of you have Ring doorbells and you're on the Ring community, we're also on the Ring community. I can post to your community. And then it also scans any lost or found pet posts on Nextdoor. They haven't yet got it working with Facebook, because Facebook is a lot more complicated way of doing their software, so they haven't been able to make that work, but they are working on trying to find it to work for Facebook. Anything also that we post will be scanned. If you look at the last page of your pamphlet that I handed you, it's a heat map of Victoria, and unfortunately, it's mostly red. We weren't surprised by any of the areas that showed red. It's, if you're from Victoria, you know, it's Queen City, Silver City, Bottom Street. But the nice thing is it's, we'll be able to see change, because we've got that historical marker of where we have high intake, and then we'll be able to change it. And that's another reason we were picked, is because we have really good data. You know, everything's logged really well by my staff. So, you know, we'll be able to track this and see that works. And then every time's one successful, it actually shows on our dashboard how it's working. So, I appreciate it. What I'm hoping is, you know, as we, as we move through the city, we're going to be asking to put signs up in other areas, like schools, possibly the parks. Of course, we only want to put signs up where we have permission to put them. We don't want to be a bother to people or, you know, causing things to look bad. So, you will see more signs, and this is going to be tracked through September. So, hopefully, sometime in October, November, they'll have the totals down, and we'll figure out how effective it is. But right now, it's not costing us anything, and that's the best part. So, it's free to us, and it's been a, so far, it's already been helpful.
If somebody wants a sign mark, how do they get ahold of you to get one?
They can either come out to the Animal Services, they can call us, they can email us. If you see my truck, I have them. I walk downtown every Wednesday. I walk a dog in our wonderful downtown, because I like our downtown. Do you see me with an Adopt Me vest? Not me, the dog. I always have the signs in my trucks. If you're in the area and you want to walk a dog with me, you can call me at the Animal Services office. Some of them have my cell phone number, text me and tell me you want to walk a dog. I know we ran into the mayor a couple of weeks ago. You didn't go home with a dog yet.
I did not. Yet, yeah.
But it's, again, it's, I do that for two things. A, like I said, I love the downtown, it's a beautiful area, and also, it's a way to get attention about the dogs. You know, when you see me walking around noon on a hot day in Texas, and I'm walking the dog in the Adopt Me vest, people do stop and talk to me. So, if you see me, feel free to ask, but like I said, the signs, the officers also have signs. If you see a dog truck, they all have extra signs with them.
Could I ask a question?
Certainly.
Since you're here, Mr. Sloot, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I'd be remiss if I didn't ask you this. A lot of people contact me, they try to reach animal control, and they can't reach them on the weekend. Could you give us just a brief, what's the best thing to do when they're trying to find animal control? Should they call the police non-emergency?
In the city, it's police non-emergency, or the county is sheriff.
And then if deemed necessary, they can get in touch with you?
We only come out on priority calls on the weekends, you know, injured animals, sick animals, people injured, you know, bites, whatnot. Stray loose dogs, we don't, if they're not aggressive.
Which would be the same for the Police Department.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they, they're fully aware of what we go out for, super helpful.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Mr. Sloot, thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
I thank Councilmember Butler for inviting me, and I appreciate the council's support in this, and City Manager's been wonderful to work with. The whole city's been good, so I appreciate you guys.
Fantastic. We'll look forward to see what the numbers look like through this program.
Yeah, I'll come back in the fall and let you know how it works.
Please do, yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other items from council?
Thanks.
No? Okay. Moving then to Citizens Communication, I actually have no green cards. No? Okay. That's a first, y'all.
I know.
We have no items of public care.
Little fair check on Michael Wondro, please.
That's what I was thinking. So, we will jump straight to the consent agenda. Ms. Andrew, can you help me out?
D1, adoption of minutes of the regular meeting held May 20th, 2025. D2, resolution approving the Third Amendment to the Debris Management Contract with Ashford Incorporated of the Deerfield Beach, Florida. D3, resolution approving a professional service agreement with the Alliance Transportation Group, LLC, for the Victoria Transit Public Engagement Plan and Services in the amount of $84,000. D4, resolution approving the purchase of a pump and motor model 400 DSC III for Lewis, from Lewis Electric Motors and Pumps for the Service Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $180,000. D5, resolution awarding a construction contract with Mercer Construction Companies for the collection lawn repairs at US 59 Lift Station in the amount not to exceed $123,000. D6, resolution authorizing an application to the Texas Department of Transportation, TechDOT Transportation Alternatives Program for the Guy Grant Trail Project to construct a multi-use trail connecting Guy Grant to Lone Tree Hike and Bike Trail in the estimated amount of $2,414,000 and committing to the required local match amount of the estimated $482,800. D7, resolution appointing members of the Board of Health. D8, resolution approving a three-year renewal of the city's Microsoft Enterprise Agreement with SHI Government Solutions Incorporated for the amount not to exceed $314,504.16. And D9, resolution reappointing the members of the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. Do I have any motions with respect to the consent agenda?
Moved to accept the consent agenda as read.
I'll second that.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda passes. So, we will jump into then Section E. Item E1 is actually my item, reappoint Vanessa Heinhold as the Municipal Court Judge. As you are all aware, Ms. Heinhold does an excellent job for us as our Municipal Court Judge and has, through our conversations, agreed to extend her term. I think she's very excited about the move, as we all are, to the new Public Safety Headquarters. And so, this would be an appointment for a, an additional two-year term for her to continue the excellent job that she does. So, I will entertain any motions with respect to that appointment.
They're moved.
Second.
Got a motion as second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Heinhold. I told you you were shooing, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on then to item E2.
E2, resolution considering the recommendation of the Planning Commission in regards to variance to Section 21-180, Table 4-1, Minimum Driveway Clearance Table, in Section 21-198, Landscape Area Required for Commercial Proprio Located at 3109 Houston Highway.
Good evening, Council. Okay, so this is a request for two variances. One to the driveway standards that require separation from the intersection of streets as well as landscape requirements. So, you'll see the subject property is the property outlined in yellow, it's Warrior Supply. The property owner requested a building permit to build an additional building on site, and then, of course, was told at that time to complete the site plan requirements in order to obtain a building permit. The yellow, or the, I'm sorry, the red circle shows both of the properties that are owned by the property owner. That's Lot 13 and 12, as you can see on the aerial. So, Warrior Supply was, had a first site plan in 1984, so they submitted an amended site plan that was approved in January of this year, which you see on the screen. And as you see on the site plan, the comments, you know, of the driveway that has long existed but was not shown on that original 1984 site plan, so I'm not sure. We couldn't, we don't have any data showing when it was permitted or when that non-conforming driveway was used, that you saw on the aerial, is, and is still in existence. We don't know exactly when that came into play. However, the site plan that they submitted in was approved, did show that there would be no driveway, and you can see in the large lawn area in the back, it is titled "Grass", and that would have complied with their landscape requirements. So, this is what the property looks like prior to the construction of the new building. You can see the aerial from February 2024 off of Google Maps that does show that driveway in existence, but it also shows that the entire backyard area is grass and is not a yard. So, during the inspection process, of course, staff reviews, or goes out and inspects for, not just the building, but also the site for compliance with the site plan, and it was discovered that the entire grass area had been converted to a lay-down yard, and the driveway was still in existence. So, Warrior Supply has since requested a new site plan that allows a full lay-down yard without any lands, with being under the landscape requirements, as well as keeping that non-conforming driveway in its current location and not upgrading it or making any changes to it. So, this is what the site now looks like. Both Planning Commission and staff did recommend denial of this variance. The whole point of the planning process is to identify these issues and be able to work through them. And so, them submitting a site plan that technically complied with our ordinance but then wasn't followed, of course, does lead to problems that are harder to address. We did ask some of our directors that deal with large vehicles and 18-wheelers if an 18-wheeler could turn into the property. And if you look at, if they're, you're considering only utilizing the property in yellow, it would be difficult for 18-wheelers to turn in and out of there. But as my point earlier, he does own both properties, and so, staff repeatedly recommended that he reach out to design professionals in our community that own the, you know, they have proprietary software that figures out 18-wheeler turning radiuses and could have helped better plan for the new lay-down yard and to fix the non-conforming driveway situation. So, for those reasons, staff does recommend denying the variance.
Okay. Are there any questions from Ms. Fulgham?
They made any attempts to, to, other than the most recent with the new site plan that they submitted, any landscaping changes that have been submitted or any proposed way to rectify the challenges?
No, I mean, they're going through the variant, their proposed solution is to go through the variance and receive a variance. I'm sure if the variance were to be upheld and denied, we would have to go back to the drawing board, of course.
Any other questions from Ms. Fulgham?
I don't have any questions left up my head.
I know there's a couple of people here in the audience from representing the owner. I know that, like to give you an opportunity to at least stress the council, if you'd like to, about your requested variance, just to provide a balanced information to council. I think it would be important if you, if you'd like to do so. At least I want to give you the opportunity.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, I'm, oh, I'm the owner of Warrior Supply, and we built a little metal building there between the two buildings for storage for filters. And as we did that, we've always used that road there to come in there, you know, for 18-wheelers to unload and that. And now, they're saying that we can't use it, that we have to tear that up. So, there's no way for us to get in there any other way. We'd have to park on the street and unload there or whatever. So, I'm just trying to figure out what we can do.
And that's that curved road that goes through the back property?
Yes, sir, that's, that's always been there. We've always used it.
And you're coming off of Carstner?
Yes, sir. See, they put that medium in there now, so there's no way for them to turn in there anymore. So, we have to come around this way. So, the only way to come in there is right there, where we've always come in there. You know, right there on that corner. There's no other businesses or anything around there. It's a dead-end road there, dead-end road there. You know, we've never, there's very, very little traffic at all. We've never had any problems, or, so, without that road, I can't do business. Or I have to park on the main road and unload on the main road.
So, the, the original site plan that was submitted showed that that driveway would be closed, and then obviously, that changes on the amended site plan. Can you just speak to that?
I'm not aware of that at all.
Okay.
I've got the contractor here with me that can talk about it, but I haven't, I'm not aware of that at all.
Okay. What, when, was your intention going into that project from the get-go that, that that driveway would be, would be the access point for, for your lay-down yard?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which, which driveway? Because there's one closer to the Houston Highway, and then there's a second one where that, that road.
It's right there on the corner, right there, that big drive that comes in and goes right out. right out there. You know, we, we came in and, and we did sidewalks and curbs and everything they asked, but the other, you know, it's just not feasible or in, in my business.
Right. And I drove by there today and you can't see it on this picture, but further up by the building itself is where he's referring to, that they put in sidewalks and curbs and another driveway up there. It doesn't show up here, it might have been on one of the other pictures.
It's not, no, it doesn't show. And it, it's a, it's a big area and we're, you know, we're going to landscape it and all that, but you know, as far as what they're asking for, it's a little bit much.
So the whole reason that we have a developmental service department is so that they can see issues like this before you do the work. And so now what they're saying is, as an alternate solution, to somehow make that driveway be utilizing part of the adjoining property as well. Have you put any consideration into that? Have you talked to them about that solution?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding you. It's not, not to use that drive? There's no other place to ford drive?
Well, and, and the reason for not using the drive is because it wasn't on the original plan. It wasn't on the plan you submitted. And so they didn't ever address the fact that the plan, that it should be shut because, should be stopped because it was never on there. They saw on that site plan that it wasn't going to be there.
I understand what you're saying. Yes, but I, I didn't know that it wasn't on that plan. That was done without my knowledge. And that's why I'm here.
I think like a lot of situations, it sounds like a series of miscommunications.
I know, and it's just like, you know, what am I going to do? I've been here all my life, you know, we're trying to conduct business and now they want to shut me down and, you know.
Well, and that's why I'm asking if you're open to looking at another solution that incorporates.
Yes, ma'am. We've talked to them about, you know, other solutions and there's no way to, to do that. I mean, like somebody show me.
And, and historically, that driveway, how, how long have you used that driveway in its current format or, or current location?
Thirty years, thirty, well.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's one of those driveways that's not paved and doesn't have the paved entrances, you know, that we run into other problems with.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Goen at this time?
No, I was, so the, the driveway closer to Houston Highway, there's one at the very top part of that screen. There's that one and there's the one where the little road comes out. Put the cursor up. At about one o'clock or noon, keep going.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one oh nine, go straight up, right, to your right. Down a little bit, right there, to the right. That's a driveway right there.
They, no, that's all been closed in. We've put, they made us put sidewalks in there all the way to there and, and.
So then that driveway right there is, it's got to be what, eighty feet, hundred feet? I mean, it's.
Which, which one you're talking about? Show me which you're talking about.
Where the, the brown spot is where you're coming out, the driveway that we're talking about.
Yes, that driveway, yes, right there is about, it's forty feet. And so that's why, you know, we can come through there. It's, it's plenty of room. That's why we, you know.
I can show the, the current site plan. So that was what.
Can you zoom in?
So this driveway remains.
Okay. Okay.
There's a driveway on the, the other side. So you're utilizing this street coming in and coming out here, that turn can't be made. But what we didn't explore is if the turn, how far the driveway stays back here to unload and get them out here.
Right. And that, the new building is right there in between those buildings and it's not, you know, it's thirty feet, anyway.
Could you come in? Oh, this is hard to drive. Hand-eye coordination isn't there. Can you come in here, park here, unload and go out?
Are those buildings on the back part of that property?
Huh?
Those are shipping containers and I'm not sure they're still there.
Yes, all that's there, that's, that's storage right there.
That shipping containers are much easier to reach.
Okay. All right, any further questions?
There hasn't been any traffic issues with the thirty-year use that you've used this driveway, has there?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate your input. If we have something else, we'll definitely ask, so.
Thank you.
You bet. So council, the agenda item is to deny the variance.
Right, which is what the planning commission.
Which is what the, the planning commission recommended. So just as a reminder to everyone, so.
So if we approve this as written, it's a denial?
That's correct. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, so. I think we probably need to have some discussion on this, so why don't we have a motion as a second and then we can discuss.
I mean, a move we adopt.
Is there a second for adoption?
Yeah, I'll second so we can have discussion.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Young. So there's a motion before council then to, to approve the resolution that's before us denying the variance that's requested. And now I will open up the dice for discussion on that, on that topic and that motion.
I drove by there, took a look at the property. I understand the, I'll, I'll use the word miscommunication in regards to what was presented. And it sounds like, you know, what you said, mayor, that there's been a series of miscommunications across there. I look at the, the, the business itself, where it's located, what the use is, and I, I'm, I'm, I understand the issue the planning has. However, it's, it's my recommendation that we grant the variance. I don't know about the landscaping, there's, there's not a whole bunch in there, even the, the green spot that's there now has a gas line and electricity underneath it, per the signage in the area. It's very industrial. I think it serves its purpose. I understand the concerns, but I think, I think common sense says in this regard that I'm erring on the side of awarding a variance for this property owner.
And I think, you know, this is a light industrial area. The, I think there's very little traffic on that, that, what is it, Cardigan Street or whatever it is back there.
That's a rough road.
Yeah, it is a bit of a rough road. I, I mean, I guess my consideration of this was in part based upon historical use. I mean, this is a thirty-year usage in the past. I know that we have put a new UDO in place. The, multiple times when we were considering that UDO and considering some very, some provisions within that, there would be scenarios that were brought up about, well, how do we adjust for this? How do we adjust for that? And the, the answer was always, well, somebody can apply for a variance. And so given the situation, I, I think our job is to take the facts as they exist on the ground, look at what does the UDO say and say, does the UDO make sense to apply in this scenario? Given the historical uses, the, the light industrial nature of that neighborhood, you know, to me, it doesn't make sense to say you have to have this driveway moved off of here because I think that's just going to lead to further problems. I'm concerned about if we don't allow usage of that driveway, having trucks that are out on the street versus being in the parking lot, which I think would be a better situation. And so I, I would tend to favor as well the, the granting of the variance.
I'm in complete agreement with that and aligned with that as far as traffic flow. Although what's been suggested certainly could work, then you're looking at those trucks pulling out onto Houston Highway and the, the constraints that that then imposes versus their use of the back roads that they're using right now to access. Because they would be exiting and blocking traffic and there's the potential for accidents that way too, plus the historical use.
Well, I'm going to see if I can convince anybody otherwise because in my years on the planning commission, and there were many, we had very few situations where someone submitted a site plan and then didn't follow it. And it's difficult for me to accept that the contractor didn't know what they were supposed to be doing. So while I agree there was miscommunication, I don't think it's the city's responsibility for that miscommunication. I think they were very clear. And had this been presented, they would have also, in this case, taken into consideration the adjoining property, which is owned by the same owner. This is not a unique, it's got to be handled just within this property, which is something that's fairly common. Because there is a solution with the adjoining property, if our planners had had the opportunity, they would have been able to address this upfront. Then addressing the fact that this has been used for years, that's one of the reasons that we have the UDO and that's one of the reasons that we do planning and site plans, so that when we have situations like this, and we all know that there are others in town too, if we don't take this opportunity to address them, then, then when do we address them? And lastly, I'd like to say that the people on the planning commission have been appointed by us to advise us and on all of our boards, when we make a decision that's contrary to what they, in this case, gave as a unanimous recommendation, it really sends a message to them as well. And so I'm concerned about who we want to send, what kind of a message to.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Any other comments or discussions? Okay. So the motion before us then is to approve the recommendation of the planning commission to deny the variance. We have a motion as second and I'll call a vote on that. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I believe the motion failed. Then if our intent is to move forward with granting the variance, then I would need a motion for amendment? Is that correct, Ms. Lacy?
That's correct.
I need a motion for amendment to the resolution to grant the variance rather than deny the variance. Do I have that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to amend E two to grant the variance in regards to the property located at 3109 Houston Highway.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion as second. Any discussion on the amendment motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I believe that the motion granting the variance passes. Obviously, these are difficult situations and difficult items to deal with. Certainly, we appreciate the work that the board puts in, we appreciate the positions that business owners have, where sometimes rules set, set in a vacuum, so to speak, don't necessarily apply to what's on the ground out there. I will say that, that I think Warrior Supply is, is adding to their business and that was part of what they were doing here, which is part of what we're really trying to promote is growing Victoria. We want businesses to thrive and we want them to grow and we don't want things that maybe don't apply to the real-life scenario to get in the way of that. So I thank you all for your position on this and your consideration. I know it was not taken lightly.
I think we need a vote. We've got an amended motion.
We voted and it passed.
To amend it?
Yes.
And then?
Is that correct, Ms. Lacy?
Yes, you voted to amend it. Yes, sir.
Yes.
I think the issue is, is that normally we, first and second, the resolution, amend it and then go back and vote on the amended resolution, but this time it failed and then we amended it. So I think that's where the confusion is.
That's where the confusion is, but yeah.
Okay, do we need to go back and, and redo the vote on granting the variance? But I, I don't think we do because the, the motion to grant it failed.
Yeah, you didn't amend and amend the way, thank you, April, for jumping in. That's, that's where the confusion is. You didn't amend and then adopt the amended, you denied it and then you opened up a new motion amending it.
Correct.
Which is kind of different than how we normally do it.
Got it. Well, I don't always do things the same way. All right, so that is done then. Let's move on to item E three.
E three, resolution awarding the Anthony Road and Hanselman Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project to Ramrod Utilities LLC in the amount of 2,500,000.
Mr. Shiblick, welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council. Tonight, we're going to, going to ask council to consider award of contract for sanitary sewer improvements on Anthony Road and Hanselman Road. This project is part of our 2025 CIP and will, let's try to blank, will address two separate issues in this area. Just, it's like a slide is missing. Okay, anyway, there are two separate issues in this area that are to be addressed here. One is that on Anthony Roads during wet weather, the sewer line will overflow via SSO due to the lift station pumping into a line that's a little, slightly undersized. The other issue is there's an area on, between Hanselman Road and Highway 59 that is currently unserved with sanitary sewer. The budget for this project is 2,400,000. The existing 12-inch, it's like this is in wrong order, I'm sorry. Anyway, the map here shows that Hanselman Road, running from east to west in red, that will be, we will be pipe bursting that line from a 15-inch to an 18-inch and then going up Anthony Road about halfway toward Lone Tree, again, pipe bursting and increasing the size of that line from 15-inch to 18-inch. And then from then up to the lift station there at Lone Tree and Anthony Road, we will increase that line size from 12-inch to 16-inch. Then going south from Hanselman Road, we will construct a 12-inch sewer line that will provide access to sanitary sewer for about 70 acres in that area. Our proposals were received and opened on May 7th. We received six proposals. After evaluating these, it was determined that the proposal from Ramrod Utilities LLC at 2,500,000 and at 120 days of construction time provided the best value to the city. Engineering staff recommends that you award this contract to Ramrod Utilities.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shiblick. Any questions? No? All right, thank you. I will take, entertain any motions then with respect to item E three for awarding of the contract.
Move to approve item E three?
Second.
We've got a motion as second on item E three. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? E three passes. So then moving to item E four.
E four, resolution appointing three members to the Victoria Development Commission Board of Directors.
Good evening, mayor and council. The resolution before you tonight will appoint three council members to the Victoria Development Commission. Before deciding on who to appoint, I'm going to give you just a brief description of what that commission does and, and its functions. So the Development Commission was created back in 1982 as a public nonprofit to promote commercial, industrial and manufacturing enterprises by issuing bonds on behalf of the developer. It kind of simply acts as a conduit to allow borrowers and private entities to finance the project on a tax-exempt basis. And there's three ways that they can do that tax exempt is to issues, small issue manufacturing and industrial projects, solid waste disposal, water and sewer, wastewater treatment projects and special exemptions for promoting transportation projects such as an airport. If this looks familiar, it's been a long time, but Mike had actually done this presentation way back in 2020 when we were all on Zoom because of COVID. And the, just a few of the projects that they've done in the past. If you're, grew up here in Victoria like me, you remember the new HEB coming in at the corner of Rio Grande there. So that was a project that the Victoria Development Commission supported. The issuance of those bonds, it's no longer there, of course, as a Little Caesar sits at that corner and they moved further, just slightly further on that property. Gulf Coast Paper was a project that was done in 1983 as well, issuing 1.2 million in bonds for that project. And one more is the Todes Motel Project, which was done in 1984. That currently is in America's Best Value Inn and Suites, but that was Todes Motel at that time. That currently is in America's Best Value Inn and Suites, but that was a Todes Motel at that time. So just a little bit of information about the board. Three directors serve on the board. They do have to be city council members. They serve two-year terms and they, of course, may be reappointed. And the terms shall not exceed the period for which the directors are a public official of the city. So that's part of our problem. This board has not met in a few years. So currently, we have two vacant spots because the, the two spots that are vacant were held by, uh, former Mayor Jeff Bucknight and former, former council member, Josie Solis. So we have two vacancies. Dr. Young does currently, uh, sit on that board by himself. So we need to appoint, um, and then his appointment actually expires this month. So we need to appoint actually three members, um, all of which need to be from council. So, um, Dr. Young has graciously agreed to be reappointed if y'all wish to do so. But we do need two other volunteers to serve on that.
Volunteers is a great word.
Can I make a nomination? Oh, if you wanna volunteer, go ahead.
I will volunteer.
I'd like to volunteer as well.
Great, all right. Thank y'all very much.
She heard we didn't meet for several years. Very infrequently. It's a great board to be a part of. Now, it could become very, very, you know, useful and.
So based, based then on the, on the volunteers, Ms. Scott, I think you and I are left to make the motion.
I do not want to volunteer, so I would like to make a motion that we appoint, um, Councilmember Kidder, Councilmember Butler and Mayor Proten, Mayor Protem Young to the Victoria Development Corporation Board.
Do I have a second?
Aren't you gonna second?
I guess I need to second it, don't I? I will second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations and thank y'all, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We hope that as things grow and develop that that board will see lots more action in the coming, coming years.
Absolutely.
All right, let's move on then to city managers' reports. Mr. Garza.
We have one item for you this evening related to our CDBG annual action plan and I'll turn it over to Julie for this presentation.
Good evening again. Um, so it is that time of year that we always give you a, a recommendation for our, um, plan year that's upcoming, starting October first, for our community development block grant. So just a refresher, um, the CDBG is an annual grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city of Victoria is an entitlement city. We received this grant just because our population is over fifty thousand. Um, and then the purpose of the grant is to reduce poverty and its effects and develop viable communities through a variety of ways. So this is what our annual timeline looks like. In March, we have a pre-application workshop that is mandatory for all the nonprofits who wish to apply, um, to attend. Then they must submit an intent to request funding. That intent is for them to just briefly describe what program they want so then we can go talk to them if, and make sure that their program meets the, all the multitude of requirements that, um, comes with the CDBG grant, that are of course published by HUD. And then, once we've made sure that what their intent is, um, of course, does meet the requirements, then, um, they submit, they can submit the full application, which is due at the end of April. Um, and then we take May to review the applications and then, of course, bring the recommendations to you. Always the first meeting in June. And then in August, uh, we have the public hearing process and ask you for formal approval to submit by August sixteenth, which is, um, the statutory deadline to submit to HUD. This year's been a little bit different because normally we receive our funding recommendation in late April and this year is, is almost a month, um, delayed. So we have partial recommendation and I hope you forgive us. So our entitlement funds this year were five hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. We have unallocated funds from previous years and so the total funds to budget is five ninety-five, um, thousand approximately. The proposed funding budget, um, is our twenty percent administration, affordable housing program for ninety-two thousand, demolition at sixty-two thousand eight hundred and forty, public improvements, um, fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine twenty-four cents. Um, and the reason that is TBD, to be decided, is we're working with, um, Public Works and Engineering on what those public improvements are. There are several sidewalk projects that we can fund, possibly fund, but we're trying to get quotes and figure out exactly. So I can tell you that the public improvements are proposed to be sidewalks, but I can't tell you exactly where. And then, uh, public facilities, um, proposing to be a hundred and ninety-five thousand budgeted towards that and public services at eighty thousand five hundred, which again, um, we are always capped at fifteen percent for the PSAs, although that's really the greatest need in our community. So just a reminder, these funds can only help those that are low to moderate income or, um, help neighborhoods in, um, economically distressed areas, which are census tracts where the majority is below the median family income. And these are the new limits that just went into effect. So our public facility recommendation is just one project at a hundred and ninety-five thousand to the Victoria Housing Authority to, um, replace windows and repaint the building as at Fillmore Apartments. Boys and Girls Club did apply, um, for a new AC unit. Unfortunately, they are located in a census tract that has flipped out of the eligible census tracts. Normally, those census tracts are established every ten years with this, with the census. But because of the issues with the twenty-twenty census, because of course we were in the middle of a pandemic when that was going on, they, they're not sure, they didn't feel like the, the data was very reliable. So they have since published new, um, guidance and new census tracts, um, that were to follow. So we've updated our map, those went into effect last October. And so the Boys and Girls Club is no longer in an eligible census tract. Which theoretically is good, it means that the neighborhood is, is much more economically viable than it was in the past. So these are the public service activities recommendations. As you see, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars was requested, but we are only allowed to grant, um, eighty thousand five hundred. So we have, um, quite a few returning programs. We, we did, we are recommending funding everyone that applied, um, just not at their full funding, um, request because of course we don't have the amount of funds to fully request or fully fund their request. And we do have some new programs and that is Hope of South Texas, trauma care for victims of child abuse. Midcoast Family Services, their resource hub. And then, um, Perpetual Help Home is, um, not really new to the program, but they are back. And I guess Midcoast is not really a new, um, a new agency, but their program is new. So those are both two new programs, but agencies we have helped in the past. So as I mentioned, um, this must be submitted to HUD by August sixteenth. So, um, if everyone is, um, get a head nod on these recommendations, then we'll go write the plan over the summer. Keep in mind, this also will be, um, our consolidated plan, um, that we have the meetings on this spring, in conjunction with this annual action plan and that will all be presented at the August sixteenth, or August fifth council meeting for us, um, for approval and then we can submit to HUD by August sixteenth. And then I'm gonna end on a little bit of bad news. The National Community Development Association, which is, um, you know, the, I guess, trade association for community development planners, released this quote, or released this statement, um, earlier in May. And President Trump's, uh, budget is proposing to completely eliminate the HUD program. So currently, um, the current, um, bill that is passed, that is just passed, the one big beautiful bill, doesn't, um, hasn't cut the HUD program or the CDBG program yet. But there is going to be many subsequent budget bills throughout the summer that we do believe one of them will, um, cut it. Or it'll just not end up in any of those bills and it'll be cut for lack of funding. There won't be any appropriations. There is a specific bill that completely repeals the entire program, um, which is another way to kill it, you know, lack of funding or just completely eliminate the program. That was, um, sponsored back in February, but it has been sitting in the House Committee on Financial Services. So if, um, this go, these plans go into effect and, um, funding is not allocated or the program is completely cut, this will be our last year to receive CDBG funds. On that note.
Are there any questions?
I, I do have one. You've probably answered this in other sessions, but is the funding that you receive completely federal? Are there any state or local funds? It's all federal?
It's all federal.
Okay.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment.
Sure.
Julie, you and your team work really hard on this. Um, I appreciate the time that you guys spent with me to help me understand how it all works. So I just wanna, I wanna give you a shout out and your team because you do work really hard on all of this.
Thank you. Yeah, we've kind of joked that, uh, our life will be a lot easier with the grant, but it, it helps so many people in our community that we actually are very heartbroken, um, that the plan is to eliminate it because it is a huge need.
Well, certainly, we will be watching that and see, uh, what happens. And what August is final approval date theoretically?
Theoretically.
Okay, okay, all right. We'll keep us posted on developments between now and then, obviously.
Definitely.
Thank you for your work on this, we very much appreciate it.
And we're good on the funding recommendations.
Absolutely, and I'm gonna echo Ms. Butler. Thank you for all your hard work and your whole team and to all of our community partners for all the great work that they do.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Garza, is there any other city manager reports this evening?
No, sir.
All right, I understand we do not have an executive session.
We do not.
So we were out at five fifty-eight.